Good, I think we're all here on, I see Kim is here, to discuss the amended site plan at 46 Cedar Road. Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Have people, you've just bought the property as I understand it. Have people explained to you what the process is, what we're doing here, and why?
Yes.
Okay. So, we reviewed this property because the construction exceeded a limit that kicked it into site plan review by the plan. And we issued a set of conditions in connection with that application. Did people explain that to you?
Yes, recently.
Alright. And so, what we're here to do is discuss your petition to change the conditions, at least with respect to some aspect of the site.
Okay.
But, I just want to make it clear that we could agree with what you're doing, ask you to, or tell you to modify what you're doing, or simply revert back to what was initially decided in the initial application.
I mean, I guess the one-
Was that explained to you?
Yeah, but the one, Kevin, it's my understanding, the initial application, the fence was always labeled as temporary. It was just put up so that we could get the pool in safely.
I don't think it was presented to us as a temporary fence. It was presented to us as a feature of the plan. And we talked about the fence in the review, in the initial review. So, I mean, we, there was several, there was discussion about the fence and whether, you know, and its location and in particular impacts of that fence, which is really a pool enclosure on a butter's. So, just to be clear, I mean, we did, we did discuss that in our initial review. So, as I understand it, what you would like to do is relocate the fence that was initially nearer your house to out to the property, to close to the edge of the property lines. Is that, is that accurate? Okay. And our, our job is to determine whether that would be an acceptable change to the initial conditions that we imposed on the property. Okay? So, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Alright, so is anybody gonna present the proposed amendment, or is it gonna work?
Jonathan White, I was representing the Corsis tonight. I was brought on board last week because the Corsi knew that I know the property. I represented, first sold to them and really hadn't been involved since the end of December. But, so I'm gonna help with the presentation, but we also have the builder Wayne Caruso here to answer questions and help. I guess the first thing I can show you is I have a photograph of the fence that's there now.
Where do you want the fence?
We have it shown right here. Alright, if we come up?
Yes, please.
I'll let you come up, Kathy Wayne. And- No, that's where the fence is now. That's where the rules were out at proposal. And the area that the most time has been spent, the last week or so with Joe and then today with Kim, was this stretch. Oops, come up there too, or the audience, those are interested. Along this stretch here, which is the Canenberg's property. So, the closed distance there to the property line is, right now with the, some posts were put in, was the very closest, my farther closest is four feet. Out there tonight, we saw we could fairly easily, and we cut on the other side of a tree, make it five feet. So, the proposal here is it's a black wire mesh fence. My understanding is the type that the board considered as the type that Lindsen moves. And they're proposing it's a four-foot fence. They're proposing three to four-foot rhododendrons, fifteen of them. I think working with Joe, that the sense was that was how far it ought to go. And I understand rhodies grow six to twelve inches a year. So, that's the proposal. I'll let Kim speak for herself. And then there was some concern about interfering with the roots of the existing vegetation. The proposal we came up with was, you know, they have to be dug by hand. The proposal was on the day we're gonna dig it, we'll start digging and Kim would be there. And if it looks like, she thinks it's gonna cause damage to a couple of trees. I think there's three trees that provide some overstory there. Then, the intent would be, I think there's a stretch of about four primitive evergreens that she has concern behind them that we'd have to put it in front. The concern with the front, and Wayne can speak to it, is just how close the septic system comes to the trees there. But, even backtracking for a second, the concern that they have right now is that the relatively small yard and the fence kind of breaks it up quite substantially. They have two twelve-year-olds, one of them, they're twins, one of them is quite athletic. They wanted to get a little more use of the yard. And the other, other thing, they have, they have a fourteen pound, and they have a shishaw dog. So, they can't put an invisible fence there because the coyotes would get it. So, they'd just rather have, for both reasons, they'd like to push out the yard. So, it would be difficult to get the fence on the other side because of the septic, of the leach field.
Yes.
So, the thought was, let's protect it. But if Kim has concerns about it when she sees them starting to dig the hole, then they're gonna have to find a way to somehow get on the very edge of the leach field. What they have on the leach field is-
There's the leach field, I just-
Yeah, they have both the leach field and these inspection covers right there. One of the, the last inspection cover is right inside, right up against the bushes. And as you can see, the inspection cover, there's still a little bit of leach field after the inspection cover.
If I can just tell you. Originally, I was trying to get some sort of alignment that brought it in closer to here, right behind this tree. And between this one is a plastic cover. Originally, when we were out there, it was thought that that was an inspection port, which in talking to the board, Al, she said if that was an inspection port, then this whole tree is within the septic field. So, she questions whether that really is an inspection port, that's right in this location that prevented it. We just talked today about the-
The inspection port is an expansion. It's five feet off the last trench. You have, you know, your regular trench, and then you have an expansion trench for future. And that's what that cover is, it attaches to both trenches.
Okay, so, but that's not captured on the asphalt?
If you look at the planning plan from Gilson, it doesn't show the inspection port.
But it's also not on here.
Jonathan, where's the sketch that you showed me out on?
Here's, I had, I called Jay, our boy of Gilson, who did the asphalt. There's the asphalt, on the plants, the ones that are closest. And then he, he located those same, you know, those same five trees right here. So, they're certainly close. And the trees, the trees are pretty much staggered. The clear, the clear is the backup leach field, or the reserve leach field. Once again, because it's such a small area, and they wanted to screen from the Canonbergs, you know, it's tight, it's tight here. Can I just ask, what's temporary about the fence? If the, what's temporary, it's, it's not a fancy fence right now. What's temporary, I think what you, you know, from what I'm understanding is Corsi's-
You're saying this fence is, when you think of it?
Oh, no, existing fence. No, the existing, this fence.
Okay.
The Corsis view this as temporary. And I can understand, you know, it just chops up the middle, middle of their yard.
That's why we talked about it, when it came, you were, you were there.
I was there.
We talked about this fence. We said, you know, this is, this is, we thought this might be a problem. And we mentioned it. And, but we said, what we don't want to do is, is impinge with fencing on the neighbors. I mean, we went through that discussion. So, it's, this is exactly what we were concerned about. We wind up with fences right on the property lines.
So, if your fence went right along, you know, where the vegetation is, is that on the property line? Or you got, that's part of your property?
No, the proposed fence is-
It is over here, but it's-
It's just got this slight change.
Well, I'm just sort of looking to pick up the photograph, you know, so that you can get in your yard. It's like a protective dog from coyotes that doesn't go right over a fence like that. So, I would still mind your, mind your talk.
But I mean, we've got that situation where it's right on the property line. This one, which is below this retaining wall, for some reason, I can't imagine why anybody would want to use this sliver. And then, we've got this one where it literally jumps up over, there's a, is that, remember, there's actually quite a wall here. It jumps up that wall and then right along the property line there.
Now, this one, the Van Huyses have sent a letter of support. Now, Mr. Cohen is here and I don't-
I will, I will support what they want to do. It's their property. You know something? A good neighbor doesn't have a defense. I'll support it. Okay? As long as it's on their property. I had a problem with a previous building that had scarlet plant, cut down my trees. I want to be next to my neighbors. They deserve the fence.
Yeah, you don't mind that it's right in your yard?
No, no. The problem with the previous building, it cut down my trees. I wanted trees planted. He didn't plant the trees. It's only a result of lawsuit against them. He was supposed to do something. The man lied like a fish. Then he flooded my field, my leaching field, and he drained his pool, and it stuck me for money.
So, I think, so I think the issue is down-
It's right here, on this property.
We weren't aware that this was still considered an issue.
Oh, I don't know if it is or isn't, I just pointed out.
Is that area on the photograph?
Yeah, this is near me. They're sort of looking toward this area.
Yeah.
Looking down.
So, once you got, what would be the problem with having a fence like-
Inside the-
Inside this area.
Or a condo.
Yeah, it gets rid of it, I can understand. What, no one wants a fence cornered through the yard.
Or this condo.
Well, it has, since none of us actually visited the site recently, but Kim was there.
So, all these are more natural.
I'd really like to hear what you guys- Well, I mean, you guys remember, this was a very tight little sliver of land. The septic field is right here. If I had my preference, it would be to plant, to put the fence in front of that row of those really tall evergreens that we planted. But I'm being told that by the engineer, that that's where the septic-
Well, why don't just pull it back then, all the way up on this side of the screen plant?
Here.
Because then they couldn't screen it from themselves. The hope is to screen it from both.
Well, they could though.
No, we can't screen it.
They could, they could plant the rhododendrons on that side.
Well, the issue is here, and you can't.
This is, this is the only yard we have. This is the only play area I have for my kids. And this is the only, there's nothing in the front yard. This is the only lawn that there is for them to go out and play ball.
Yeah, the front is pretty well preserved. But, as far as I understand, this is where-
It's the only grass on the lawn.
I know, when we went over, this is where the view issue was, and it's where the septic is. So, the hope is that they'll be able to both screen it from the Canonbergs and from the Corsis.
But the whole idea, from the get-go, was to minimize the impact of whatever happened on this property from the Canonbergs. I mean, that, we went through several sessions.
No, I understand that, and I'm hoping the board agrees that planting that row of trees, of rhododendrons in front of a fence that tends to disappear on its own anyway, will accomplish that.
Well-
Joe, can I say something? Mr. Cohen did. Do you have the, I brought the long plan unfortunately, the plan that I showed you the other day that I had my engineer. Do you have it, your copy of it?
I have it upstairs, but we can, I can indicate where that, that line was.
The line, the mirror. And he said two things. I mean, he's gonna speak when it's my turn, but since he hasn't spoken. He made an outline. I brought the plan right into Joe. We tried to make a copy unfortunately. It was made with yellow highlighter.
Is this the Schofield plan? That's illegal?
What's illegal about it?
The Schofield plan is not legal according to my subject interest.
Okay, look.
That's, that's not the issue.
It's her turn to talk.
It's my turn.
So, we're just gonna, you know.
Is somebody interrupt you?
I just asked if that was a Schofield plan.
Wait a minute, but don't talk to me, John. I appreciate you talking to us. So, I mean, she's in the middle of making a point.
Okay.
And then, after she's finished, if you want to comment on it, that's why.
I will do that then.
Go ahead, Susan.
This plan is the plan that I got from Gilson, which I took out of Schofield.
This plan?
The plan that Joe's gonna go get.
Okay.
Well, I was kinda marked where that line was.
And he, and he drew, the senior engineer there drew, he does a lot of work in Weston, and I think you even already can find it.
Now, what are you drawing?
This is where the engineer said that a fence could easily go. The main thing was on trying to weave it.
It could weave through the trees. I asked him about several points. I asked him about, you know, could it be woven within the trees, given that the trees, the plantings that exist are all in this stuff, which is, I believe, bark mulch, I believe it's bark mulch. It's not part of the lawn, it's not part of the playing area. I was suggesting when this Corsi came over to my house, when I said, what are these people doing in the yard? They're building a fence. I said, I think we should have heard that. And then she came over and we together walked over there, and I said, well, what about weaving, weaving the fence? Do that way the burden would be shared of the screening. It would be partially screened from me and partially screened from them. Then, when the issue of septic came, which I thought was more than fair, since the original purpose of the screening was to benefit us, because it was such a large and denuded lot to start with. And I thought it wasn't consistent with the original planning board rule to just sort of toss that aside and put a fence totally on the other side. And these smaller evergreen bushes, I didn't think was, was continent with the original screening order by the plan. As the septic, I also have managed to get it to bring the light there. This is what Mr. Ryan, who's the senior engineer there, he says, I can give this to you.
Senior engineer where?
At Schofield.
Okay.
He says, they've been in business for a long time, not to my knowledge, but I guess they're working well. Except the lawsuit, which is gonna hopefully be settled soon. But Cohen, it's to us too. We have two surveys, he has none. Title V requires inspection points in leaching fields to Tennessee and Marv, fifteen is all that is. You can get it at the D P side. There's no specified clearance around the port. The port's a vertical four-inch PVC pipe with a screw cap. And all you have to do is be able to get to it. If the port was six inches from the fence, you could get to it and inspect it. So, I think, this was brought up before when I went to see Joe many, many occasions about this. And we met at one point at the board event. I contacted the board about it again. They said there is no issue of a five-foot clearance. And what can I say? The threading of the fence posts in the woods would certainly seem to me to be okay. Again, I'm not building the fence. There is a planning board order, as we know. And to just assume that, well, why don't we just put it on the boundary because of the need for a large playing area? But the, but the area that, that I'm suggesting, or I should say, at Schofield and I and Joe, suggesting threading the posts is on that bark mulcher area. It's not on a playing field. It's within the trees. It's among the trees. So, it's-
You know, we have had cuts in this kind of situation before. We have often woven it between trees, and that's been, you know, acceptable, but reasonable. So, that's not unusual for-
As in a, in a finished area though, where you planted all the trees? In other words, you know, there, it's gonna be, if you woven up here, it's so much harder to maintain what's on the other side. I guess you can put some gates or what have you, but it just, you know, I know there've been, I don't expect to hear, but there's certainly been adverse possession cases when someone's line maintained that side of it.
Well, really, that's not, it was ago, twenty years for adverse possession and ownerships. It's gotta be, it's gotta be active and declared.
I guess, you know, maybe it's philosophical when it comes to, as long as it's a screened fence, I've always taken the attitude, the closer you can get the fence to the property line, the better. If you can screen it, because you're pretty Mrs. Canonberg-
The question is whether it's acceptably screened from the neighbor.
Yeah.
Yes.
You want to talk adverse possession?
No, we don't want to talk adverse.
Okay, fine, just want to, you know.
I don't mean to cut you off, but really, really, it's not really, this isn't a representation thing. I don't know. It's, it seems reasonable to me. I under, I, this is, Susan's right. This is, this isn't lawn that we're talking about. And it would be possible to put a gate in to maintain the wood chips. And it would, it would significantly diminish the impact on the Canonbergs, which is always, it's been a concern of ours from day one on this property. I mean, as you know, Jonathan. And I just think it seems like a reasonable compromise. She's not saying you gotta pull it all the way back to the original lines, which, you know, we could, let's face it, we could say that. And so, I think we're, we're looking for an answer that doesn't destroy their ability to use their grass and still provides enough distance from the neighbor to make the neighbor feel more comfortable. So, it seems like a reasonable suggestion.
One thing to Mrs. Canonberg is, is, you know, I'm a recent entry to this, but I wasn't aware that the issue was down the second-
Apparently, yes, Jonathan.
What did you say? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, the issue of the whole length of your-
She doesn't want a fence right on her property line. I think that's the message here.
Yes.
I actually agree with Al that we don't really have to revisit all, I don't believe. And that this is a very good solution to weave it through.
It's a good compromise. It catches the law.
Yeah.
And, you know, and protects the neighbor from having a fence in place. So, it's kind of, you know, logical.
Okay. I'm gonna do this process, and I have to go. First of all, I'm not gonna put a fence in any workspace. Okay? And, and looking at this, it is, it is not right on the property line, it's six to eight feet off the property line, and running all through this area, which is the woods.
It's not six to eight feet?
No, it's eight. In this one corner, it wasn't because there's a huge rock there, and there's another rock there, and we had problems weaving it.
What you're saying is that this is the scale.
This, this, the fence is further in six to eight feet. It goes down to-
That's not true. I mean, it's not what the drawing shows. This is a one to twenty scale. So, this is like, this is like, this is like six feet maybe here, maybe eight feet there. But, but in here, it's, you know, down to, that's like one foot.
This, this is, this spot is very tight because of the way that there's a lot of trees in this area. And let me finish. I mean, I've walked this many times at this point, okay? This is not three feet in here, okay? So, the value that it is in, and all of this, it's getting further up. This from here out is the middle of the woods. There's no visibility from the house on any of this over here.
No, no. You know, once again, she talked to the wrong person. She talked to reliable fence, so it'll get all hit per minute, issue is short, still her fault. But, they put in, if you put in poles here.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I don't think Kim, Kim will move it quick. I don't think you were able to verify for that. It's not, not what this plan shows. The only place it's close.
Can we get an accurate showing?
Sounds like we need an accurate showing. If, if, if this, if, if eight feet, Wayne, were you? I know Kim didn't have a chance.
Yeah, it's not-
Joe, you've seen it multiple times. Do you have the pictures?
So, this is on the back side down here. That's why I was trying to push it in front here. And if that's a five-foot extension on the existing, why can't that be cut down to a two-foot extension in a little bit farther away?
What we have to say is modify the septic system so that it works. It's as simple as that.
But, I think the only one we're talking about is here now. I think we hear you, we hear you here, that we've gotta weave it, gotta weave it there.
Well, we need it, what we're talking about is an anecdotal description of the fence location, which may be more what Susan is talking about than what this drawing shows. So, I don't know what reality is right now. If this is not an accurate depiction of where the fence is, what are we doing?
I don't know if members can make out stakes. Right there, and there. That's down in that back.
That's that corner. That's the corner where I think there was-
So, I mean, it basically is like a foot, a foot off that.
And that's, that's why I said, in that one spot, it is because there are very large trees in there, and there's a very large border there.
Is this a straight fence line?
It, it more slopes in, and then it bobbles here.
Right, as you get up to this, it does slightly come out. So, up here, it probably is about three feet, and then it binds as it comes down here.
So, it's not a straight fence line, which is what they're showing?
Yeah, it bobbles the woods.
Also, what I would like to suggest is, you know, we're hearing, this is all woods, you can't see it. Maybe what we should do is go out and look at it. Let's look at it. I mean, we'll, we'll listen to you, but we need to see what the reality is. Because Joe's pictures, while they're very nicely, high resolution, it's hard to tell what we're looking at. So, maybe we should just schedule a walk and see.
I do want to make a point, which is obvious, so forgive me. Manhattan, the corner of Cedar and Men of a Road is elevated quite a bit higher than is, if I were the office owner, I wouldn't care about Cedar. And Cohen's property is accordingly low. You can barely see the roof of this house from the level of the fence. And I'm, I mean, I'm lower also, but lower in the worst way. Unless the screening was placed right up against the house, it's visible. You and I discussed this before in the previous walks and stuff like that. So, I wanted to just point out that there's, as I said, forgive me, it's obvious to you guys. The two, the two neighbors are like this, and there's a reason why they don't reject.
Susan, I'm not questioning your reasons.
Okay. No, I just wanted to say that I'm not just weird.
No, no.
I'm not maybe weird, but in this particular situation. And the other point I want to make is Joe came out when I, when he learned of this, and he found stakes that were on the property line. Right? And I didn't even see them. They were-
Well, they were from the, they were from the previous-
Is it that picture that you just showed?
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay. So, then I'm done again.
Yeah, those stakes weren't on the line, they weren't at all.
I guess it's just what you said, that you have to see it, because I don't know whether, I think it's precision fence, isn't it? Precision fence, just put them there. Part of the reason they put them there is they're not operating with the proper survey, which brings us to an area that you don't want to go to. We have a survey of our property, and we have, we don't have a dispute that I'm aware of with 46 Cedar. But, according to the agreement that my lawyers have with, the lawyers for Stevens, whatever settlement they make with Cohen should not affect our property. And because the, our property market is flush with the ground and not a great amount of concrete bound, I think that the precision fence used the long bound, which is another reason why it's important.
I had the property re-surveyed.
Sorry?
I had the property re-surveyed.
There's no disagree when I-
There's no disagree on the property line.
Wait, wait, wait.
No. I had the property re-surveyed by Gilson last week, and there's no disagreement on the property line.
What, what happened was, they used not only the one that is the plan right there, but also used the Schofield plan that had been prepared previously, and staked both. And the stakes were one on top of each other along this back portion. So, the difference between Cohen and everyone on that side, at least, did not translate to this boundary between- So, the, the difference between Cohen and everyone on that side, at least, did not translate to this boundary between, um, 46 Cedar and Mrs. Canonburg's property.
I appreciate getting a copy of this famous new plan, I mean, this, we've been, important almost a year on this lawsuit, and I'm hoping at some point it will be settled.
Just to be clear, Susan, how, assuming that there is some kind of a discrepancy, how do you think that impacts what you're proposing to do on the...
None at all, it's been not right on the property line, but as John observed, not me, I'm not that good at, um, you know, the way an architect is looking at the thing and seeing the discrepancies and the what. Joe's, when I finally found the Schofield mark, the pin, the iron pin that's in the ground that's flush with the yellow top, that it was covered with leaves, and Joe said, it was clear to him that the property line was defined by the concrete bound. Precision fencing is not a surveyor, they just look at what seemed to be obvious, then they put a, a stripe or, um, a flag around that. But the answer to your question is, the answer to your question is, is it doesn't make that much difference, the difference is very small, but there is a legal agreement between my lawyer and Stevens anyway, and I would hope that that would persist. And I don't think that Ms. Corsey cares, really, they just get it right. I hold that Kevin, well, they got it right. If you got it right, it doesn't matter, and if they're not right on top of the property line, all the better. But the claim was made that they were offset from the property line when Joe came out and used a stake right on the property line.
Well, I mean, also, just the stakes that were there existing, and then what, um, Gilson did based on that Schofield plan were right on top of each other, and the fence, that's where the fence is like six inches off from all those stakes. I mean, those, that line corresponded pretty much exactly, so it's not a question whether the fence was over the property line, um, it's really just in that back corner, it gets close, and then as you start going up, it separates away from the property line. But it's, I think it's more of a question, is it separated enough, is there vegetation that's in between? I think it's all, um, separate discussion than the fact of the property line that the board is really concerned about.
Right, well, we can, we can look at everything.
Right, and my position is more or less what you said, it's just not a huge deal, it really isn't a huge deal, but considering all the legal fraud and money that's gone down the drain on this lawsuit, it would be prudent to stay away from the property line, that's all I can say.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, you, you have a comment?
Okay, Jonathan, I need your help in this one, I'm going to show you. Uh, the Schofield plan that everybody's working on over here was a plan that was put on records with no backup, no legal backing, no legal bearings, no reference of any legal document, it's just a plan. You could have John Dogo out there make the plan, that's what Mrs. Canonburg did, she had a chaos to bear, he made a plan. It is not referenced by anything, it is illegal, you can't go by it. So, say please simple English, that plan is being thrown out by land court judge.
Yeah, I, I think, what we have to do is go out and look at the stakes, figure where the fence is relative to the stakes, and figure out the best, what we believe to be the best alignment for the fence as it goes along the property line.
There are some differences over here, and that's what's still being litigated to, to these two property owners, there's no question, there's no difference in opinion. Things get a little grayer there, it's really not worth it.
You were supposed to go re-surveying fresh, and you use that, and we're, uh, if it's neighborhood, if you can figure out, if you can figure out a way to cite this fence, hearing concerns that the board has, as well as your neighbor, um, and get that on paper, that would be a good thing to do.
Well, let's look at it first.
Can we, um...
Is it possible to get a copy of this other, what the stakes are at?
Well, this should be a public...
I don't know that Kevin put in a new plan and he can just re-stake.
He just staked the property based on the survey.
Yeah.
I don't physically have a piece of paper.
It would be really handy considering all the legal fraud. And by the way, since Cohen said that, I'd just like to point out, there's a second survey, which was done by Metro West Engineering, well-known to this town, which agrees with the Schofield survey.
But that's not what's...
Okay, I just, you know, these outrageous claims just don't, don't deserve them.
Kim, could we meet here, um, nine o'clock Tuesday, um, after 22 Sears? I realize we may start losing members after that sidewalk.
Wait a minute, what are we talking about?
Talking about a sidewalk next, next week.
After, Sears Road, 22 Sears is at eight, so if we could do this at nine.
I'm looking forward to those sidewalks, that is the day after town meeting.
Yeah, I can't believe that we did, it's great.
Okay, we'll, we'll come and descend on you on Tuesday, uh, next week at nine o'clock, and we'll walk and, and see what works, what seems to work after that.
Should get coffee tomorrow.
No, that's all right, we don't want to be bribed by coffee.
Offer to the neighbors too.
Right, coffee will do it. I just want a picture, can I have a picture, please?
I have a quote from years ago, Ann Leamal, that's made a mistake, going, it was a mistake, she had to go into something where someone was offering wine and cheese, and she said, tell me, I'll have you know I can't be bought, before the last glass of wine and a little piece of cheese. However, you remember that, one of our best select people ever.
All right, thank you very much.
This is a consequence of the picture.
Well, are you looking for a copy of this?
I have this, but I guess I...
What do you need, Susan?
If, if this is what you're saying, Kevin, has stayed, then this is good enough, right?
I, I guess.
My problem is, when Joe and I were out there, and maybe I missed something, when Joe and I were out there, Joe agreed based on his observation of the line, and the man wanted to side his eye, that that went to Boulder, and whatever anybody else may say, we had an agreement between Stevens and us, because that was the last one we made, the predecessor, and that, I don't think Ms. Corsey has any reason to disagree with that, that their settlement in the Z B A with Cohen would not impact our common border. Okay, so it should be moved, there should be nothing involved here, but I just want to make sure I know what it is, so that when we talk about where the fence is going to be, we're all on the same page, so I just...
I understand, but what is, do you think there's a drawing there that, that pulls it all together? What is it you're asking, you're asking for a copy of this?
I want a picture that shows what the property line is that's going to be observed when the location of the, of the fence eventually gets placed.
And you think it's not this?
No, no, this may be it, if you're now saying this is...
Yeah, I mean, is it, that's, that's it, because, one, this is what they're submitting, but it's based off of the plan the board approved and its modification back in, um, December 2012, when that little strip changed the property, uh, dimensions.
More than we know enough.
Yeah, okay, but it's not this.
And this, and this, this post did end up right near the line because they put the post in before I had the lot re-surveyed, and I didn't realize the title, so I'm having to pull that up.
Oh, all right, okay.
So, so, I don't want to, I want to stay out of that, but what I do want to do is, reasonably, I mean, again, I'm a bit flustered, I want, I want to preserve as much of the yard as we can.
Yeah, no, we, we understand, so we're trying to strike a balance between screening her and having play area.
I think also the drawing that was made, I'm sorry, by...
I'm sorry, but if you need to be, you know, to feel confident in terms of where the property line is, I think that that comes to, you know, you're getting a, a surveyor to do that.
Yeah, I have two.
Well, one good one should do it.
So, some of the surveyors on this corner...
It looks like a sloping course out there.
Thank you, guys, very much.
I don't think they all agree.
This one does.
I don't think they...
This one does.
All right, thanks a lot.
Well, will you be there?
I will, I'll see you sometime.
Good night.
I, I made that open name.
Right, I'm just checking.
What time will you get there?
Not for sure.
Ice, ice.
What's your point?
I'm pretty good, I go up for it better.
Wouldn't it be nice if you, I, I have a lot of kids, they can afford to...
I think, I think you have to think that, because when you're...
It's the game, it's just, it's like, but it was going to be that side.
All right, good luck.
It's all right now.
I'm fine, as long as I'm all right.
And that's, and that's right, and that's right.
Okay, see you.
Being out there, it's all right.
Okay, thanks, we've got to go into the...